When it's needed, so that might require looking at the policy and, you know, if we're going to pay the officers for certifications, I think the expectation would be that when called upon to do training, that they would respond unless there's some reason not to. So not to say that that budget item, line item would change, but that was a discussion that was had.
I think for budgetary purposes, you should think about your total amount of officers that you have and just take that times two for the debt security. We said we'd pay up to two different certifications at five hundred bucks a piece. So at least for the budget purposes, there's what we have. Whether or not it gets spent or not, you know, that's up to if they actually have the certification or if they're not doing it, that should be up to the chief to decide, hey, they're not using it. We're not going to pay them. So budget wise, I would just think that we just, you know, prep for the max. But obviously that's not going to be the case, especially with the new officer.
And ironically, the number that's in there matches that. If we have six officers, two specialties, twelve times the five hundred, that's something there. And on the same note, in that same conversation, not all specialties are alike. Some officers may have a specialty that they use once every five years. Whereas if we have a field training officer who's training officers, they are using that twelve hours a day. Imagine doing your full time job with someone sitting next to you for the duration of your shift. So there's some discussion there that there may be a proposal coming to compensate a little bit more and not necessarily monetarily, maybe more comp time. And when I look at our overtime budget, I see that we already have some room to be doing that. So it's something that I'm looking to do without any additional costs for this time.
Comp time.
So.
Yes. So going back to NIP at the, just going through NIP at the part time budget. You're going to be fully staffed next year hopefully. And you've only used thirty one percent of part time budget this year. And we're not even halfway through the year wide five thousand increase.
So I think there, I think there was kind of a, and I'm still experiencing it. Some officers say, I don't need a part time guy working with me. I've worked by myself for so long, I can be self sufficient. I understand those officers, I hear those officers, but that doesn't make the calls that they're going to safer. So if they're going to domestics, drunk drivers, bar fights, they need to have someone with them. So there's been a recent move to staff part timers as much as we can, especially on busy weekends. And even it, even the fully staffed numbers, we would still have some officers working by themselves. So we still have to take, even if we got two on each shift, which fully staffed, we're still not there. We still have vacations and time one not to worry about. So between the festivals and in my opinion, I think do it in Delphi as farmers markets are. We're having a lot of community engagement with Foot Patrol right now. If I can be scheduling part time officers to be present for more downtown events. Do it in Delphi five K that we have coming up in October. That part time money is important to me to offer that. And honestly, it's a recruiting tool. It gives officers a chance to dip their toe in Delphi Police Department and possibly come over to us. So not that I'm actively recruiting from any other department, but throwing it out there.
And now is your equipment budget and uniform budget going to reflect that if you hire any part timers?
And it, that's tough at the moment, no. At the moment, if we do the math, it's actually a reduction in equipment budget. And that is partially because I actually just got the full reports today from twenty twenty two APVs to see where we spent our money. I'm buying equipment from the guys right now that they're, that they're asking for and that we need. So once you do the math and when we get to that line, once we subtract things out, it's going actually from twenty two thousand to sixteen thousand. So I've reduced it a little bit. I need to do some more math on that and make sure I'm not shooting myself in the foot with these new guys coming in, tasers, uniforms, guns, everything else. So that item will definitely be revisited. We may need to move some things around and put some more in that way. Moving on to that equipment line, so two new portables, portable radios for our two open positions. Body cam quote, I have ten fifteen body cam quotes on my desk, ranging from a hundred and nine thousand over five years. I have it pared down as much as I can to about fifty one thousand dollars over five years. So what you see there, that half body cam, that is a, that's going to be an item for us, at least for the foreseeable future. For five years, when you break it down, you know, what you're planning to go with is between ten and eleven thousand dollars. So half body cam coming out of that line. And then you see the three cars being outfitted and that's assuming fifteen thousand a car. So trying to keep it about where I got it from a recent presentation. Any other questions on equipment or supplies before we move on to the next?
So when you say the fifty thousand, fifty seven thousand for the body cameras, does that include data?
Yes. So the original quote included unlimited data storage with our number of officers, calls for service currently. We've been, I didn't believe in, actually had the salesperson tell me they didn't believe that we needed unlimited. They, they priced us at three hundred gig per officer. So that's.
Per officer, yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, in my opinion, that's a lot of video. So and it's something that we can change on the fly. If we get a year into the contract and they say, you're not using this, we can bring it down. And also the original quote was for ten body cameras. So I brought us down to eight body cameras for now. It's one of those where I at least want to get the ball rolling and maybe it's something where we have our officers. I don't know how careful you're going to get. You guys leave your body cameras at the department, take them home?
Well, I mean, it depends if we dock them at the station or if we can upload our computers. I'm sorry. It depends on if we dock it. We can dock it at the PD or we can, I'll upload from there. So we have, there's more and more ways to upload footage.
The only, the only weakness in us going down to eight body cameras from the ten that was quoted before I got here is if we have part timers coming in. So maybe it's something where we dock our cameras at the station and they're always there on standby and a part timer could take one out if he wanted to. But that pared down a lot, it's, it's somewhat of a bare bones package. It at least gets the ball rolling for us and then we can tweak it from there. If we bring on that additional ninth officer, we can also add a camera mid contract or appropriate amount. So I don't want to buy cameras and then have them sitting waiting on officers, so I pared that down.
So it is a, depending on which company you go with, when you have licensing, sometimes you have to, depending if you're the administrator, you would have to assign every time someone's going to use that camera.
I see.
So logistic wise, to keep the headache off of you and whoever else you deem as the administrator, help be administrator or viewer of the footage, it would probably just be best interest just to have the camera and have that one license to that, otherwise you're going to be flipping back and forth with it.
So our current staffing did, to give one to myself as well, so we would have seven. That eight would be a part time camera. As we bring another officer on, then that would be time to buy the ninth. So that way we always have one in buffer. And if we find that we're using more part time than that, I can bring it in. I verified, I'm quoting and leaning towards going with Axon like the Sheriff's Department did, mainly for ease of use for the prosecutor to only have to use one system instead of two different systems to retrieve that evidence for them. Those cameras also come with GPS for the officer. So if something happens on a scene, if we need to locate an officer, if we need to recreate a scene, we have GPS on their person to see where they're at. I've heard good things about that so far.
It's a good system.
Yeah.
It's a really good system to have.
And then like I said, those, those three cars being outfitted, I kept it at fifteen thousand. Everything's going up right now. I'm, in, in theory, I should ask you for more money for that, but I will do everything I can to try to keep it at that fifteen thousand dollar per car level.
This is not assuming the cars that you're getting this year, right?
Correct.
This is three additional for next year's budget.
Correct. So the, you tentatively approved a fourth. I spoke with Leon the other day, that fourth is no longer. So putting three on top of our current four makes seven. So we're really not at take home level yet. That three next year, if we were fully staffed, that is our nine plus one pool of part time car.
And then would you anticipate going to one car per year after that on rotation?
Yes.
One new car?
Yes. We have a two thousand nineteen that currently has just under seventy thousand miles on it. So that's probably a car that, that I would take to try to keep those miles down on that to get it to survive to that point when we can cycle it out two years from now. So moving on to computer software, we put the other half of the body cam quote there. So that's the, that's the increase that you see in that budget. Cell phone, we didn't change, just to make a note, we've only used thirty seven percent of that budget. I'm making contact with the cell phone company this week, see if we have needed upgrades or where that needs to go. I also need to review the, the report for that to see what was spent last year and make sure that we're keeping up with that. So while that, while that spend is low, I might anticipate spending some money on that budget here soon. The police other, I was, I wasn't clear on that. I got the report today and looked it up. That hundred and forty five dollars that you see there, that was spent for an award. It was a plaque for an officer for years of service. So that's knowing that I can spend it on that. I think I have some things that can fall in that other category and I'm pretty happy with that one. Subscriptions and advertising, we, we put an increase there. So police departments, it used to be that police departments interviewed applicants. Today applicants interview police departments. And you see a lot of police departments with nice sublimated pop up tents at festivals and career fairs and whatnot. So you wouldn't think of a police department having an advertising budget, but in twenty twenty three, we need to, to bring in candidates. And then also obviously be used for maybe an information station at Old Settlers, Bacon Fest, National Night Out, maybe even farmers markets and things like that. So that's the reason for the increase there. Training, so we put a, a small increase in there. Part of that is for having additional officers. I'm big on training and I want to send guys to training. The reason why I'm not able to burn more of that at the moment is if you send a guy to training, he's not working a shift and I don't have the coverage for the shifts unless I bring in a part timer and spend more part time money. So the question I have to decide on that is, does this include the academy? I don't have a cost for the academy at the moment. Sergeant Deckard called and left a voicemail. I have called and left a voicemail. I'll call again tomorrow and leave another voicemail and I'll get squeaky until somebody gets me an answer. But by the time we sit down again, I will hopefully have an answer for you on the academy cost for training. That'll give us a clearer picture of what that will look like.
I think it was a thousand bucks. It wasn't that much. I can ask the sheriff, ask him, because we just, we have two of them. I just want, so I, I'm going to say it was around a thousand bucks.
That would be, that would be lovely.
I think in that, you've got to take into account though whether or not they're doing it online or whether or not they're going down to school and they're eating meals. So that all becomes part of your cost too.
Meals and fuel.
Where is the kind of plate food? It's outside.
Equipment repairs, we put a, a small increase on again. Hopefully getting fully staffed, additional officers, anything that may fit, additional vehicle wise, anytime we're increasing fleet, we have to increase some of those numbers. Maintenance agreements, flock cameras are, I know that Mr. Dinger is aware of a flock camera is, is anyone else familiar with the term? So flock cameras are license plate recognition. Once you, once you see one, you'll see them everywhere, there's jurisdictions that have just tons of them. Even HOA, there's HOA in Lafayette that just bought six of them. They run about three thousand dollars a year. They install on their own full, costs about thirty six hundred. I've committed to a flock camera. Nick McClellan at the prosecutor's office and Sheriff Leggett have both gone in with me on it. So we're all only spending one third of the cost to try it out. But license plate recognition, real time, vehicle goes by and it's stolen. Whoever set up on, on the network on the system to get alerts, they get an alert. So if an officer's sitting, running the school zone and a vehicle goes by the flock camera and it's flagged as stolen, you should get an alert, both email and text. If you set it up that way, that there's a stolen vehicle just past this camera. They're, they're a powerful investigative tool. They're, they're powerful, like I said, with stolen vehicles, suspended drivers. So even if somebody takes a license plate off of their vehicle, if you put in a black Ford Expedition, it will show you all black Ford Expeditions that have driven by the camera within your search time. If we have someone that says this vehicle committed this crime and it had a monster sticker on the back of it, search by monster sticker and it'll show us every vehicle that's driven by with that sticker. Missing bumper, I don't know, it was a blue truck and it didn't have a bumper on it. Search for a missing bumper and it'll pop up. So it's a very powerful tool. And once you're part of the system, other departments can choose to share their flock camera with you. So if we have a suspect here, we put in the system and it passes a flock camera in, you know, Greenwood, it will alert Greenwood and it'll alert us that our vehicle, our suspect vehicle has been seen elsewhere. So pretty powerful system. So on the maintenance agreement, it's under maintenance agreement because we don't own that camera. We rent their service. They try to make it very easy. They say yes, we say yes, and they take care of the rest. So if a tractor hits that camera and knocks it over, they come out, they replace it, put it back up, and we're not having to take care of anything. So that initial camera is thirty six fifty, so the twelve hundred and change will be coming out of maintenance agreements.
Their price, their price just threw up because when it first started this year, it was like twenty eight hundred bucks.
It was, last time it was twenty five hundred.
It was twenty eight with the initial install on twenty five.
So both have gone up, the, both the annually and the install. He said they went up in May. I asked about a price break for quantity and he kind of laughed at me because Los Angeles has like thousands of these things and he claims they don't give them a price break. So yeah, I guess getting two or three of them, we don't have much hope for a price break. But we're getting the one, we'll test it, evaluate it, make sure it's worth it. Mental and physical health, our mental health budget. So we have the Employment Assistance Program with Dr. Gardine. I just met with her the other day. Our officers utilize it, I'm encouraging them to utilize it, I hope that we utilize it more. As you can see, we spent quite a bit of that and actually emailed the mayor the other day that we would probably need to transfer some money because that, that will probably run out. So I'm happy to put more money in that budget. I think that is very well spent. And then last but certainly not least, police cars, the three cars like we talked about. Explorers this year, they went up to forty four, I got them back down to forty two, eight sixty two, twenty five. So there's a price increase expected there. Tahos were forty three thousand, but we couldn't get ahold of any of them. So I was warned that they were having a price increase as well. So we're estimating in the fifty thousand dollar range. While we may end up paying a few thousand more for a Tahoe versus an Explorer, getting them serviced locally is a huge advantage for me instead of having to go to Lafayette or Monon. One of our vehicles, since we talked last, one of our vehicles is still sitting in Monon for warranty repairs. So when it's time to pick it up, I'll either have to pull an officer off the street or pay somebody overtime to go to Monon with me to pick it up. Whereas otherwise, we can, if it was a GM product, we can just go to, they may enter here in town and be done with it.
Questions?
Are they requiring the cameras now, the body cameras?
Requirements. I think there's a federal mandate that's been put out with a year deadline on it. I don't remember what year it is, which opens up some grant money, which I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of torn right now and then we need them yesterday. Our guys want them. There are grants available to get them. I really want to get a grant for it, but I also don't want to delay the deployment of them. So there's some further discussion to be had with both Leon and the mayor on that, but that's kind of where I'm at on those. I'm, I'm very hopeful we get this first contract going that by the time the next contract rolls around, that I will have some grant funding to lessen the blow of that if not take care of it completely in the future.
So some of these grants are pretty significant, sound like?
Yes. Especially the, I'm, I'm talking to a company that's police great help. They are basically foaming at the mouth. They're like, you're in opportunity zone and you haven't already taken advantage of these. Let's, we can get your policies rewritten, we get your body cams, we can help get your cars. Today, Otterbin Police Department posted that they got a side by side through the Firehouse Subs Grant Program. That opens in October and it, there's usually enough applications that it crashes the website. So I've got this grant company helping me at the moment to prepare a request for that because they got like twenty six thousand dollars. So you can imagine, we could have it, we could have it side by side to patrol our trail system and use in town and for outreach for almost completely, if not completely paid for by grant.
Do you think there's an opportunity for body cams for a grant prior to next year?
I don't know if it would be that quick. So I actually emailed the grant company today and they also offer a service where they'll trap them down and write them for us and everything. So I look at where I've, I've, I've got some, some money in different budgets that could be used for that that haven't been touched. So I'm scheduling a phone call with them to see how much that would cost because if their service is seven hundred and fifty bucks and they can give me five hundred thousand dollars in grants, it's kind of a no brainer. So I'm exploring that, that opportunity. I have no idea what pricing is, those are just play numbers at the moment. But yes, they're, they said specifically that there are grants for body cameras. I think the Sheriff's Department was partially paid for by grants. It was the Department of Labor, we didn't use grants. Oh, okay, never mind. So and grants, yes, do I have any idea how competitive, how available those funds are? I don't.
If I do recall, the grants that they did have for like body cameras and paid for the camera itself, not the storage subscriptions, they're just the camera themselves. The cameras were like seven hundred bucks a piece.
Got you.
So the storage is probably more?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And part of that body cam grant, or grant, I'm sorry, quote is replacing the camera partway through and again at the end of the contract to roll into another contract. So the nice thing about Axon is they give you the latest and greatest. So easy numbers, if we buy in now with generation one camera, in two and a half years, if they have the third generation camera, they don't give us new old stuff or refurbished stuff. They give us new, the newest model, same at the end of that five year contract.
And no additional upgraded costs.
Right. And kind of, there's, there's a fee on the bundle to do that, but it should be a significant savings, especially with inflation and technology costs going forward.
Ninety nine years, right?
Do you have to store the data?
No.
No.
Minimum, wow, minimum's a hundred and eighty days. Up to, up to, depending on what the call type is. Some have to keep them forever, there's some calls they have to keep forever.
Is that what it is?
The, the minimum, I think the state, state statute is a hundred and eighty days. Body cam, which, and then after that, you can start. You hear some of the stuff.
That's good.
Same on storage space.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Thanks.
So we can go back up at the top? Anything wrong?
Or say, can we just go there for one more?
Well, we don't really have anything to do with the airport. They're an executive board and so it's on here because it comes out of general, but if they approve their budget, we don't get really a comment on it.
Okay.
Or change it, I should say.
Got you.
Correct?
I disagree. Well, I understand that that's an executive board, but you're handing them tax paper. So I understand that board passes a budget, but I also understand that a previous council wanted to change it so that that airport became independent eventually, instead of the budget going up, it went down. And it went down for a couple of years and ever since then, it has increased and increased and increased.
Well, that's a question that you can, I think you were meeting with Marion tomorrow. You could certainly ask her about that and there's certain steps to follow to do this at that budget.
Because fire largely runs like airport, right? They may have grown into.
It is an executive board.
It's the executive board there too.
And we cannot change their budget. We cannot change their budget. Once the, once their board approves it.
I think on the, I think on the fire territory, they say it's a provider unit.
We are a provider unit, but once it is an executive board and they have their board approve it and the township boards approve it, we become a pass through. We are a provider unit, but in terms of our participation on the board, the executive board, we are an equal partner with the other, with the townships. And I know we have been through this some.
I know.
Okay. Anybody need a break or we ready to go through, starting with the page one?
Let's go.
Okay.
So you're going to start back at street and please, what do you?
We've done most.
Go to page one, start off at the very top.
So I mean, we can go through those, obviously.
No, I, I have information, so I will pass that out to you and you can take it home and study it because you're not voting on anything tonight.
But we are coming up with a proposed budget.
Okay. But then at some point in time, we have to figure out a proposed budget that stays within the amount of revenue. Correct?
Yes.
So somehow we have to address both of them.
Yeah. Yes, we do. Page one. So we assume the four percent increase on council salaries.
I would argue for zero.
I would too. Actually, I would argue zero for council for any elected official and the department heads this year and over the four percent on salary, on hourly people. I think we've done a heck of a job getting the department heads and elected officials up. I don't know, I just don't want to rob Peter's case hall. That's my thought.
I've got a printout that you need to look at. And then I don't know where the other sheets are. I'm going to look for it. She's supposed to have copies three twenty and I don't see them. AIM does a survey every year and we belong to AIM. A lot of the cities, because it's so tedious, don't bother to submit. But what AIM does, they do a survey and in this survey, I'll have to go downstairs and make copies for you.
Here's a copy of that.
Oh, yeah, we got one upstairs. But this survey shows you, and I had her pick up, two cities with a population very close to ours, two underneath ours and two over ours. But if you, it breaks it down. But if you, it breaks it down by population, it breaks it down by mayor, council, council president, council, by council member, by clerk treasurer and every supervisor's position. A mayor's assistant, but it breaks it down. And we pay more than anyone else right now.
On salaries?
On salaries. We are higher than anyone within our bracket of a class three state. I don't know how to run your machine.
Jay T.
So I think when I looked at the mayor's budget when I got it the other day, one of the simplest and easiest things you can do is to freeze your salary people. And if you remember last year, I did not once take an increase in my salary because of the situation. But this year, when you have a situation that in all probability, our revenue does not equal what our budget. If you accept the budget as it's, you'll have to probably pull those apart, Jay T., or they'll stick them up straight. Please. Then you're spending more than your revenue. You've got six months, less than six months reserves on your hands. So at this point, when you are looking at a budget for the next year, you want to look at staying way under your budget and increasing. Your less than six months of extra funds is not enough for situations. Amanda and I worked for three different days and that was to look at exactly what we would be spending the rest of this year, the months we have left. Knowing that we've got revenue coming in in December, but our main menu will come in with our property tax. And we can make it. We can make it. I say we can make it. But then like today, the mayor was upset because downstairs she has to come with an invoice she wasn't expecting. And it's like, okay, Leanne, find me another 62,000. So I can plan, but I can't plan for everything for sure. What you've got to spend, less than you take in, we've got to, we absolutely have to. So the budget as presented has to have cuts. That's all there is to it. I think it would be wonderful for, we could be Christmas and we could hand everybody what they want, but we can't. So you may have to look at giving it to them, part of it this year, part of it next year and part of the following year. Doesn't mean we can do it all at once. But one thing you can do is if someone's making 74,550 and you give them an increase, that increase is 2,980. Well, that starts adding up when you start adding, have our salary people. So you take that. We sat down and looked at the budget and I pedaled with most of it, but I could come up with 235,000 I could save without hurting anyone.